Is Chad in the audience, or?
No, he's not.
So I found out if you don't put in your full email address.
That's good to know.
That was what the problems I was having with the first two meetings today.
My address. I just click on the link and then I don't have to take anything in.
You're using your iPad?
Laptop.
Laptop? Yeah, mine it wouldn't.
I couldn't get the link in the PDF to work, because my PDF. Uh, but if I, if I get the link in the email, then it does work. Um, but I see we got a full house. Are we ready to go, Adam, or?
Um, you can go. I'm gonna go check with Ellen. I don't see her in here, so she might be watching on YouTube, but you guys can start.
Okay. All right. I called to order the meeting, the Verona Common Council for Monday, July 27, 2020, at 7:02. Yeah, I will begin with the role. Uh, Alder Journey.
Yeah.
Alder Ryan.
Yeah.
Alder Touche.
Online and present.
Uh, Alder Cronin.
Present.
Alder Cole.
Here.
Alder Ricky.
Here.
Um, Alder Posey.
Here.
Alder Kemp.
Here.
All right, we got a full, full house. We also have Mr. Sayre, City Admin, and Ms. Fisher in attendance as well. Uh, we will move on to item three, which is public comment, and we will wait for Mr. Sayre, who has the list for public comment, to, uh, come back.
All right, I'm back. We had no requests for public comment tonight.
All right, um, we will move on to item four, which is approval of the minutes from the July 13, 2020 Common Council Meeting. Questions, comments, corrections, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Alder Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Cronin. Last chance for corrections. Seeing none? All those in favor of approving the minutes from the July 13, 2020 Common Council Meeting, say aye.
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 Opposed, no? And that motion passes. Item five is Mayor's Business. I have one item. Wear a mask and follow the county's healthcare guidances. Thank you. Item six, announcements. Anyone from the council have any announcements? Seeing no, uh, hands, we will move on to item seven, the Administrator's Report. Mr. Sayre.
Uh, thank you. Just a few items tonight. We have a Plan Commission meeting on August 3rd. We do have one public hearing for that. We have a public hearing uh, in Liberty Business Park for a fitness juice bar that is looking at moving into one of the buildings down there. Uh, we also have an informational meeting for the classic, the Old National Redevelopment Project. It's gonna be on July 30th at 6:00 PM via Zoom. Um, so if anyone wants to check that out, we have the information. They can contact the planning department, and I think that information potentially has been posted online as well for potential quorum of the council. Uh, not too many COVID updates. Uh, we're continuing to monitor kind of the school discussions that are occurring in Dane County right now. Obviously, if the schools are closed or going virtual, that'll have a staffing impact on the city. Uh, so we're keeping a close eye on that just to hopefully position ourselves that we can react quickly if and when that happens. It looks like the vast majority are going virtual. Uh, but that'll have some staffing challenges that we, we dealt with back in March and we'll be dealing with again. So, uh, last thing I'll say, the council meeting is gonna be changed to August 12th. Uh, because of the elections, we initially moved it because we thought we'd be in person, but we're gonna stick with it just because we've been saying it for the last month and a half, but the next council meeting will be August 12th, not the 10th. I did send out to the council the draft PSLO agreement for the school district. If you have any comments on the contract, you can send them off to myself and to Luke, and we'll, we'll kind of, we're, we're gonna be meeting on, on Thursday, discuss that. So if you have any comments, uh, pass those along, please. The Heights of Verona, uh, did not renew their liquor license. The Department of Revenue recommended that we document this non-renewal at a council meeting. Uh, by me stating this right now, we are documenting that at a council meeting. So, um, this will be in the minutes, just reflecting that they did, didn't not renew their liquor license. Board review, uh, Monday to August 24th at 6:00 PM. Assessor Dean Peters will be reporting on the revaluation process and hearing procedures for any board review hearings that may come up, uh, which will be likely because this is a revaluation here. We'll have an open book on Thursday, September 10th from 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and Friday, September 11th from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Um, so that's the current process for that. And then we'll have a board review meeting in September 29th at 5:30 PM. This meeting is a minimum of two hours, so that's required for, for us to, to be there. Um, still working out the details. Most likely, that would be, uh, potentially virtual, but that's something that both Ellen and I will discuss with City Assessor, Assessor Dean Peters. Uh, board review members should take the training for that before August 24th, and please contact Ellen if you need those materials for that training. Early voting starts tomorrow, uh, and runs until July 31st, and also runs from August 3rd to the 7th, from 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM at City Hall. We are strongly encouraging people to vote absentee, um, to reduce the COVID-19 spread. Um, absentee voting continues till August 7th. The deadline to make a request for the absentee ballot by mail, email, online, or fax is August 6th. Um, and definitely combined voters have until August 7th to request an absentee ballot, and ballots that can be deposited in the drop box at the, in the City Hall parking lot. Um, it's the box. That's by the flagpoles in the parking lot. We would encourage people to place their ballots there. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions from the council.
Alder Touche. Alder Touche.
Um, you had mentioned, uh, encouraging, encouraging absentee voting. Um, is, will there be early voting like there has been in the past?
Yes, that starts tomorrow. So early voting in person starts tomorrow, um, and goes the rest of the week, and then also August 3rd to August 7th. That's from 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM at City Hall.
Thank you.
And once again, if, if people have absentee ballots and they're worried about mailing them in, where can they be dropped off? I know you just said it, but.
The parking lot. There's two signs in the drop box. It's a small little white drop box outside. I think it says Dropbox on it. Um, please put them in there. That's the best spot. We check it multiple times a day, so please, please put them in that box. We would prefer that instead of mailing it sometimes, especially as we get closer to that deadline.
Exactly. Uh, I have a follow-up question. Are we gonna be talking about San Ambrose on the Plan Commission meeting?
Yes, we will be.
Um, I would, I would suggest adding a public comment for that, because I know, um, that it seems like it's a interest of, uh, of some public interest, and so providing some opportunity for public feedback would be useful.
Would be on the council agenda the following meeting, so I guess I'd prefer to stick with standard procedures and follow the process of the PUD and have that at the council meeting on the 12th.
Okay. Well, let me think about it. We can, we can maybe take it offline. Um, and sometimes people will say that they want to publicly comment, and then no one will contact you or Catherine, so.
We have a whole list of comments already, so we will, we will be sharing those in the packet when that goes out.
Good. Um, are there questions or comments, uh, for Mr. Sayre? Seeing no further, uh, questions, we will move on to item eight, which is the Engineers' Report. Ms. Fisher.
Thank you. So for the well six pumping station construction, pumping of the well is continuing to further develop the well. MG&E has continued to be delayed on the natural gas installation, which has slowed progress of the HVAC testing. The contractor is working on getting the chlorine tank installed, as well as miscellaneous electrical HVAC and finished carpentry items. Well startup is now anticipated for mid-August. For the high school construction traffic improvements project, crews are continuing to work on finishing punch list and rework items throughout the project. This work will be occurring over the next couple of weeks. Traffic will continue on the inside lane of West Verona Avenue until punch list items are complete. Other project roads will be opening in the coming weeks with some possible lane restrictions to complete finishing punch list and rework items. For the county highway PD construction from Woods Road to County Highway M, traffic is currently split that is placed on their appropriate side, and lane closures are in place. Project limits prior to fully opening the roadway. For Liberty Park Phase Four Construction, the contractor was scheduled to pave the public roads end of last week. Um, we expect the project to be substantially complete by the end of this week. Um, just a reminder that the rapid rectangular flashing beacon project, um, is anticipated to begin soon and be completed by the middle of August. Um, and there's four intersections that will be impacted. Those are North Main Street and St. Andrews Church driveway, North Nine Mound Road and Edward Street, South Nine Mound Road and Military Ridge State Trail, and Wayland Road and Military Ridge Drive. For Kettle Creek North Phase Three, um, that phase is actually complete at this time. Phase Two final paving is to be complete in August. For the Woods at Cathedral Point Phase One, mass grading and detention basin construction has started. A pre-construction conference for the underground public utilities was, was held in the middle of July, and the contractor is scheduled to start sanitary sewer pipe construction this week. And finally, for, um, one of the major design projects, the East Side Interceptor Design, pre-final construction plans and specifications are being reviewed by city staff. Easement acquisition is on the agenda for action. Permit applications have been submitted to the DNR, and we are awaiting the permits from the DNR. Coordination with Dane County, an Ice Age Trail has occurred, and accommodations slash improvements are being included with the project. With that, I can take any questions.
Any questions, uh, on an Engineers' Report? Uh, seeing no questions, uh, we will move on to item nine, which is Committee Reports. First up, we have the Finance Committee. Alder Kemp.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I hope everyone's well today. I'd like to make a motion for the payment of the bills in the amount of $1,234,589.79.
Motion by Alder Kemp. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Cronin. Uh, Alder Kemp.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, for the sake of explanation, there was a five, uh, $500,000 payment to the Verona School District for the development agreement from May 7th, 2018. Um, there was a payment of $243,732.27 to Payne and Dolan for asshole rehab. Um, there also was, let's see, those are the two larger ones essentially. I mean, there's a number of smaller ones. There's a payment of, uh, $10,799.11 for Delta Dental of Wisconsin. Um, and there is a payment to the City of Madison Treasurer for the first quarter investment partnership and second quarter investment partnership share totaling $276,512.
You've heard the explanation. You've heard the explanation. I'm getting a weird echo. Let's see. Um, you've heard the explanation. Uh, questions, comments, uh, on the motion to pay the bills? Uh, seeing no questions or comments, all those in favor of paying the bills in the amount specified, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no? And that motion passes. Uh, Alder Kemp.
And thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, now I'd like to make a motion regarding Resolution Number R-20-029 awarding the sale of $5,610,000. I believe that should be a 10, not an 8, right, Adam?
Yes.
Okay, so it should read $5,610,000, $5,610,000 in general obligation corporate purpose bonds, Series 2020A.
Motion by Alder Kemp. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Posey. Alder Kemp.
Um, these are bonds that we have issued in an effort to, uh, fund $670,000 in street improvement projects, $410,000 for parks and public ground projects, and $4,600,000 for sewage projects.
Uh, you've heard the explanation. Uh, questions, comments on the motion? Uh, seeing no further, uh, questions or comments, all those in favor of Resolution Number R-20-029 awarding the sales in the amount specified of general obligation corporate purpose bonds, Series 2020A, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no? And that motion passes. Alder Kemp.
Sorry about that. Number three, um, discussion of possible action regarding bar and restaurant COVID-19 Support Program applications.
Uh, I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear that. Was that, was that a motion to approve?
Yes, I'm sorry. I was making a motion to approve the bar and restaurant COVID-19 Support Program applications.
Motion by Alder Kemp. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Cronin. Uh, Alder Kemp.
Excellent. Um, just so everyone's aware, uh, the city created the Bar and Restaurant COVID-19 Support Program on July 13th. The goal of the program was to provide between $1,000 and $4,000 grants to eligible bar and restaurants by using $100,000 in underutilized dollars from the city's revolving loan fund. The city received six applications by the July 20th deadline with a total of $23,000 in requested grants. City staff reviewed the applications in conjunction with the program criteria. Based on that review, three applications met the criteria. Requested, the requested dollar amount was $12,000. Three, however, failed to meet the criteria for the following reasons. They either exceeded the revenue requirement or received a previous grant. Staff recommends awarding the three grants in the amount of $4,000 each, I believe.
Thank you for that explanation. Thank you for the explanation. Uh, questions, comments on motion?
Uh, receiving the money, but, uh, a constituent raised the point that, you know, i- is there any sort of a penalty, uh, or, or way to enforce, um, people wearing masks? Uh, so another, you know, if the business is not adhering to, uh, COVID-19, um, uh, recommendations, is there any recourse, I guess, is the question?
Uh, Mr. Sayre, uh, I know you've discussed this a little bit. Uh, you want to take a crack at it?
Sure. I mean, so from a strictly recourse standpoint, uh, you won, that wasn't a criteria, kind of as you pointed out, that was originally put in there. I think my, my initial comments on that is the mask mandate, which is from Dane County. If, the city doesn't actually enforce that. Dane County is the one who enforces that. That's explicit in the order that any complaints should go to Dane County. Um, I mean, the, the council could put that in as a condition. I think the challenge we're gonna have is we don't directly enforce it, so I'm not sure how we're gonna be able to get that data. I know Dane County is incredibly busy right now, uh, with, well, with everything, obviously. Uh, so I think that, that'd be my initial comment. I think the second comment I'd have is just from the standpoint of, you know, if, if we're gonna tie that back to a specific order, or we're gonna tie that back to something that we don't have control of, um, that'd be my only comment of, that's a, it's a question to the council of, do you want to bind yourself by potential requirements that you're not actually approving or voting on, even though the dollars are coming just from City of Verona taxpayers? Um, ultimately, that's a policy question for you. I think the final comment I would have is, say you were to award whoever a grant, and then they're in compliance when you award the grant, but later on, they do something or something happens, and they're not in compliance. You know, are you gonna go, are you gonna go back and try to claw back that money? It's probably gonna be tough, if not impossible. So, I mean, those are the, the pitfalls. I kind of see it with it. Um, I, I saw the email. I think, you know, obviously, uh, you know, I'm not aware of any issues explicitly, complaints. I did speak with Chief Coughlin today about it. He wasn't aware of any issues, uh, in the city that had, had at least come to our attention, but we don't, we don't get those complaints directly. So, uh, my advice would be not to tie it back into that just because it's not our order and we don't enforce it, but that's a question for the council ultimately.
Uh, motion before the body. Other, uh, questions or comments on the motion?
I have a comment. My, my, it's really, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, my hope would be that the businesses, the business, that businesses in Verona are taking this seriously. Um, you know, it's, uh, clearly we're in the middle of either another spike, or we're still in the middle of a first wave, but this is something that, um, can be very dangerous. I have had a personal experience with someone that I care about deeply, two people that I care about very deeply, actually now it turns out three. Um, so this isn't something to be ignored. I know people want to try and get back to normal, but it's not the worth, it's not worth the cost of, of people's, uh, health, particularly your own patrons. So, I understand what, what, um, Alder Ryan is saying. I don't know what authority we would have. My suggestion would be, uh, if any of our constituents are reaching out and are frustrated by that, that they immediately report it to Dane County, uh, to the proper authorities there, and make sure that they follow up, and just be diligent.
Wear a mask. Um, any other, uh, questions or comments on the motion? All right, seeing, uh, no further, uh, discussion, all those in favor of, um, granting the three recommended, um, applications, uh, from city staff for the bar and restaurant COVID-19 Support Program, uh, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no? And that motion passes. Uh, Alder Kemp.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The final, uh, item for me tonight, uh, number four, discussion of possible action, or they can make a motion regarding, discussing possible action regarding the bar and restaurant COVID-19 Support Program. Hey, isn't that the same thing we just did?
Uh.
This is, there's, it shouldn't be different, Adam.
This is the re, um, issuing to allow.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, first of all, the applicants, this is now the program again.
Okay, so I'll make a motion for, uh, to recommend to the council approval of the bar and restaurant COVID-19 Support Program.
Uh, motion to approve the bar and restaurant COVID-19 Support Program. Um, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Cronin, I think. Uh, Alder Kemp.
Yes, um, the bar and, uh, on July 13th, the council approved the City of Verona Bar and Restaurant COVID, uh, Support Program. During the last round of, of grant applications, a concern was raised with the criteria that the business shall have less than $1 million in revenue for, in 2019. Uh, below our potential or new change criteria for another round of grants. Uh, the maximum grant is $4,000. It must be classified as a bar or restaurant as defined in the Dane County Order. Uh, the business or applicant has not previously been awarded a City of Verona COVID-19 grant. Uh, we would eliminate the criteria of less than $1 million in revenue in 2019. Uh, the business is not a franchise. Uh, the business is a local, solely located in the City of Verona and does not have locations anywhere else. Um, the city has approximately 33 bars and restaurants. 11 were previously, uh, awarded City of Verona COVID-19 grant funds. Staff recommends making 100,000 in funds available for this grant program. The council has the ability to take action on this item.
Uh, Alder Ricky.
Thought when we discussed this last, that we also talked about eliminating in this second round, um, the requirement for managed to profitable business operation in 2019. Was that considered?
Uh, Alder Kemp? Or Mr. Sayre?
I don't believe, I don't believe we discussed that, but Adam, um, if that was something that passed, did that pass prior or not? I can't recall.
Uh, that was discussed in the first round, so we, when we reviewed those, we had two comments from one, one business that was more of a, uh, childcare type business who made that comment, and the second one came from a, uh, the winery in town.
Heather, do you have concern that there may be a business that, I mean, not to name names, but are you concerned that that, there may be one or two that would not get the funding because of that?
I don't know if that's still, if they're still interested. Um, I don't have, like, personal interaction with them, but, um, I thought we, um, talked about potentially eliminating that requirement for this round. Um, only because then, yes, it could open it up to more people who didn't get a grant the first time around. Um, so, I mean, I, I would be open to including that as a, I guess, an edit to eliminate that requirement. Um, if other people think that's a good idea.
Um, and then, of course, just to clarify, this motion solely concerns bar and restaurants. So of the two comments that we got, um, one, I think would, this would apply to, and one, it would not. Um.
Okay.
You know, the, the kind of part of this was because of the, the setback in the, the amount of COVID cases where, um, bars and restaurants were the most affected by the new, the new county order. Um, but there is a motion before the body if somebody, oh, sorry, Mr. Sayre.
I just, I just want to clarify. I don't know if that, based upon the criteria and the definition that Dane County has put in place, I don't know if the one, when we got that comment from, from the winery in town, I don't know if it would make them applicable or not. Because the Dane County order explicitly references Wisconsin statutes 9701, ren's 14G, which I would have to go in and read to see what that definition, but typically wineries will fall under a different classification than that within state statute. So just to be clear on that specific one, since we've had that comment before. So I don't know if, I don't know if Fisher King would be covered by even the definition of a bar or restaurant by the state statute.
Um, in any case, there is a motion before the body if, uh, somebody would like to amend it. Uh, now would be the time to do so. And of course, if people have general questions or comments about opening the program back up, uh, that would be the time to, uh, comment. Uh, Alder Posey.
Yeah, I was holding my comment up, but if we are discussing the further opening, because I do believe that it's possible that there are other businesses besides bars and restaurants, as this is continuing on. Um, I know I reached out to the chamber to see if they were hearing something, um, but I would urge any businesses to reach out to your elders and let us know if there is a further ongoing need from different businesses. We know we are currently focused on bars and restaurants, but please, um, reach out to us. Let us know where the need is so that we can continue to adjust this program to meet the needs as best we can.
And if I could just add a follow-on to Alder Posey's comment, I mean, part of it is we started out a lot more restrictive with the understanding, of course, one, that we have limited resources, and two, that we could come back and change it. You know, so I think, I think everyone on the council and myself and city staff are open, open to feedback on this, and, and, you know, ultimately, we want to make sure that whenever this is over, um, that there are, there are still Verona businesses, uh, around. Motion, uh, before the body? Questions or comments on the motion? Uh, seeing no further discussion? Uh, all those in favor, uh, uh, of approving the, uh, bar and restaurant COVID-19 Support Program as presented, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no? And that motion passes. Uh, anything further from Finance?
Nothing further, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess we'll move on to 9B, Public Safety and Welfare Committee. Alder Ricky.
Thanks. I would like to make a motion to approve a temporary premises description amendment for LBO Inc. Doing Business's fifth quarter. 161 Horizon Drive, number 110, Verona, Wisconsin, 53593.
Motion by Alder Ricky. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Touche. Uh, Alder Ricky.
LBO Inc. has applied for a temporary premises description amendment to include the back parking lot for a cornhole benefit tournament on Saturday, August 22nd, with the rain date of September 12th. Um, mainly so that social distancing will be, um, easier to maintain.
You've heard the explanation. Uh, questions, comments on the motion? Uh, Alder Kemp. Alder Kemp?
Is this something that they've done before, Heather? I'm trying to remember.
Alder Ricky?
I'm not exactly sure, but I think, I don't think it's been in the parking lot before, so that's why they're asking for this.
Thank you.
Motion before the body. Other questions or comments on this motion? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of granting the temporary premises description amendment for LBO Inc. Doing Business's fifth quarter at 161 Horizon Drive, Suite 110, Verona, Wisconsin, 53593, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? And that motion passes. Anything further from public safety?
Nope, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to 9C, Public Works Sewer and Water Committee. Alder Touche?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. By way of streamlining the seven items I have, I'd like to break them into three separate motions, combining some items for efficiency sake, mostly because either Arbivide, Dane County, or the Brew Street. If that's okay with the council, I'd like to do that.
Seems fine to the chair.
Great. All right. Item 9C1, I make an emotion to approve an easement for parcel number one, located along Brew Street for project ID 2018-108, East Side Sanitary Sewer Interceptor Replacement, contingent upon city administrator review and city attorney review.
For my clarification, were you going to combine them all into?
This is one, this one's a single motion. The next one, I'm combining two items, and the last one, I'm combining four items.
Gotcha. Motion by Alder Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Ryan. Alder Touche?
Thank you. Parcel one is also known as the mass property between Brew Street and South Main Street, and requires two easements, a permanent limited easement of 1.25 acres and a temporary limited easement of .94 acres. The land value was determined from an appraisal performed in 2018 with the inflation factor added when the park department acquired the approximately 13 acres from the property owner. The land value was calculated to be $6,365 per acre. City offered the owner $2,900 per the easement needed and percentage, percent ratios to calculate the monetary offer. At this time, the owner has verbally accepted the offer, and that is the first of three motions.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments on this motion? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of the easement for parcel one, located along Brew Street for project ID 2018-108, East Side Sanitary Sewer Interceptor Replacement, with the contingencies specified signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? No? And that motion passes. Alder Touche?
Thank you. This one is combining item two and seven. I make an emotion to approve easement for parcel number four and nine, located on Dane County property for project ID 2018-108, East Side Sanitary Sewer Interceptor Replacement.
Motion by Alder Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Kemp?
Okay, let's start with parcel number four. It's located on Dane County property along the Badger Mill Creek. Parcel ID 0608, 221, 8001-2, requires the following easement. Again, a permanent easement of .88 acres and a temporary easement of .9 acres. Parcel nine is located also on Dane County property along the Badger Mill Creek. I'll skip the parcel ID this time, requiring the following easements. Again, permanent is .56 acres and temporary .7 acres. Dane County staff has been working with city staff to include work associated with the interceptor in lieu of this payment for the easement. The city will be performing clearing and grubbing and earthwork elements along the project, while Dane County will be performing in-stream improvements to Badger Mill Creek. A separate intergovernmental agreement between Dane County and the city will, will be presented to the council at our next meeting. Dane County staff have agreed to the easement in language, and I forgot to add to my motion that this is contingent upon city administrator and city attorney review.
Is the contingency all right with the second as well? Alder Kemp? Okay. Getting, getting, assuming that. All right, motion before the body regarding easement for parcels four and nine with Dane County and with the contingencies noted by Alder Touche. Questions, comments on this motion? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of easement for parcels four and nine, located on Dane County property for project ID 2018-108, East Side Sanitary Sewer Interceptor Replacement, with the contingency specified signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? And that motion passes. Alder Touche?
Okay, it's my last motion. It is covering items three, four, five, and six. I'm making a motion to approve easement for parcels five, six, seven, and eight, located along Arbivide Place for project ID 2018-108, East Side Sanitary Sewer Interceptor Replacement, contingent upon city administrator and city attorney review.
Motion by Alder Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Kemp, I think. Alder Touche?
Thank you. The land value was determined from fair market land values for the parcels along Arbivide Place. The land value was calculated to be $130,000 per acre. The offers presented to the owners per the easement needs and percent ratios to calculate the monetary offer are listed below. The owners have verbally accepted these offers. Parcel number five, which is at 714 Arbivide Place, requires the following easements, the permanent easement of .05 acres, temporary easement of .21 acres, and was presented an offer of $5,950. Parcel six, which is located at 716 Arbivide Place, requires the following easements, permanent .15 acres, temporary .3 acres. That owner was presented with $10,800. Parcel seven at 718 Arbivide Place required a permanent easement of .08 acres and a temporary easement of .17 acres. That owner was presented with $6,000. And lastly, parcel eight, which is located at 720 Arbivide Place, required a permanent easement, actually, no permanent easement, and a temporary easement of .05 acres, and was presented with a $1,000 offer. All these offers were at the exact same rate, and as I had said before, we had gotten verbal approval from those owners. Thank you.
You've heard the explanation. Questions, comments on this motion? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of easements for parcel five, six, seven, and eight, located along Arbivide, Arbivide Place for project ID 2018-108, East Side Sanitary Sewer Interceptor Replacement, with the conditions specified signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? No? And that motion passes. Anything further from Public Works?
That is all.
Thank you. Next, we will move on to 9D, which is Personnel Committee. Alder Kemp? No, you're muted.
I got it. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion regarding discussion, possible action regarding resolution R-20-030 to decrease the effects of institutionalized racism.
A motion for resolution number R-20-030. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Ricky. Motion by Alder Kemp. Alder Kemp?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. We have the resolution in the packet, but obviously, this is a resolution to assist the City of Verona in decreasing the effects of institutionalized racism. Following the death of George Floyd, who was an African-American man, who died at the hands of two police officers in Minneapolis, we decided to be proactive as a city and as a council to, first of all, make sure that Verona is, of course, a welcoming place, and also to ensure that we are doing a number of things inside of our city government and administration to ensure that we are fighting the effects of institutionalized racism. And so we have proposed this resolution to do that and to continue fighting against something that has really been a scourge in our country since its inception.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments on the motion? Alder Ricky and then Alder Ryan?
Hi, yeah, thanks, everybody, for all the work you've put into this. I just want to make one more little slight edit. There was a sentence added to the end of number seven in the resolution, and I would just like to amend that sentence to just add one word, anti-racism, so that the sentence reads, "Based on the success of the city's pilot training program, all city staff will undergo and complete ongoing anti-racism, diversity, equity, and inclusion training."
Was that, I would, I am going to rule as chair that that's material change to the document, so I would accept it as a motion if that's, as a motion to amend, if that's what you're doing?
A motion to amend, please. Yes, thanks.
Motion by Alder Ricky. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Ryan. We are currently making a, we're currently discussing the amendment to the motion. Any discussion on this amendment? Seeing no discussion on this amendment, all those in favor of the wording change as proposed by Alder Ricky, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Opposed? No? And that motion passes. We are now back to discussing the main motion. I believe Alder Ryan is next.
I just wanted to, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to express my gratitude to the Personnel Committee for the work that they put in on this resolution. It's very much appreciated.
Further discussion on the motion from the council? Alder Posey?
I just wanted, I know I've said it when we've spoken about this prior, which is that we really need to make the ongoing commitment to put financial resources behind this as well as we are looking at things. Training is part of it. I know, you know, we're looking at next year's budget, so making sure that we're making decisions and choices moving forward. Even though it's not spelled out in the resolution, it really needs to be so, a part of what we do moving forward, because, you know, you see it a lot of times in government where you put the words out there and you say you're going to do something, but the finances aren't behind it. And unless you put the finances behind it, things don't happen. So I think that that's really critical. I know I'm committed to that moving forward, and I hope that we all share that as we move forward with this and other resolutions we put ahead.
Alder Ricky?
That was discussed at the Personnel Committee, so I just want you to, to know that. So we're behind that as well.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments on the motion? I'll just add, you know, this, I'm glad to see the City of Verona taking a strong stand on this, and I think, you know, not, not just financial commitment, but I also think just a general commitment over time to self-examine and to think of ways we could do better and to support city staff in ways they could do better, and just kind of everyone work together to kind of make Verona our little part of the state and the country a better and more equitable place. Other questions or comments on the motion? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of resolution number R-20-030 to decrease the effects of institutionalized racism as amended by Alder Ricky's amendment, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? No? And that motion passes. Anything further from Personnel Committee?
No, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we're on to item 10, adjournment. A motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
Motion by Alder Kemp. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Ricky. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? No? And we are adjourned at 7:45 PM. Thank you.
Bye, guys.
Bye, everybody.
Thank you.